I want to call for meeting order. I'm pleased with our political decisions.
And the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and pure and just and strong.
Mr. Zarzaki, do you need to call a roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick?
Here.
Mr. Cruz, your absence. Mr. Cruz?
Here.
Miss Effante?
Here.
Stephens?
Here.
Thank you. Everyone received, uh, copy of the agenda. I'll make the motion to. Copy of the agenda.
Support.
Support by the strike general. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all good or anything by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I say, uh, call for the public. Uh, anyone wish to address the planning commission is three minutes. Uh, will speak directly in my, uh, city meeting address.
David Gordon, 55, 58, Helena Road, for the record. Uh, I'll make this really fast. Hopefully you guys can set a record when you show us being here. It'll run. Um, there's a couple of things on the public hearings tonight. Uh, one of them is about the, uh, conditional use. I would urge the planning commission to, uh, possibly take this tonight and even toss it because, uh, what it says is, you don't have to put up a sign if you want to change your zoning or get a conditional use permit, which can be quite impactful to your neighbors and anything that makes it, uh, anything that doesn't inform the neighbors about what's going on in their neighborhood is probably not a good idea. You know, the state doesn't require it. That probably shouldn't be the bar to be used to decide whether or not it's important. I mean, things are not happening at the federal level, but they're happening at the state level, which are, who are pushing the agenda. And then, the state has certain requirements, but it's the local grassroots level that really pushes the, uh, the involved in the community. So, uh, if we, if we keep the requirement of having to have a sign, you're going to get a change to your, uh, to your zoning.
The second is a, is a very short, uh, comment I'd like to make about this, um, free library mailboxes that, that people put on their front yard to transfer books back and forth, which everybody's in favor of reading. Um, I'm glad that you're going to include this as a permitted use. Uh, when I looked at the write-up, it just seems that there's a whole lot of, um, additional government regulations in here that might be stripped to make it more of a, a friendly, uh, opportunity for people to exchange books through their free libraries and do creative little things on their front yard. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Is there, yes, is there anyone else that would like to address the planning commission?
She's getting a set of headphones that would be made.
Wait a moment. We have, uh, three, three minutes, please, and, uh, state, state your name and address for the record and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Mary Devlin, nine two one one, Brookside Drive. I noticed on your paperwork tonight, um, on the business section, it's concerning the little library bookstand. And I think that with the planning of the North Village and other things that are going on, I think it's a little bit ridiculous for McKenna and anybody else to find fault with this bookstand. First of all, it's community oriented. There's no charge for it. And, you know, it's a book exchange. You put one book in, you take one out. Then I'm looking on here at the requirements. That it says that currently the bookstand is five feet in its entirety, in the height. And then down here, land use permit required. Application and plans for a little free library bookstand must be reviewed for land use approval by the township prior to construction. This is absolutely, I'm going to say this, it's absolutely asinine. And I think you better think twice about this because it's wrong. Next thing, if somebody wants to put up a little lemonade stand, they can't do that because they have to get approval for doing so. And it's not like it's infringing on other people's property and it's not out in the middle of the road where people have to drive around it. And there's nothing constructing, uh, the, you know, the bookstand at all. So, I wish you would change your mind and let this little bookstand stay because it, you know, years ago, they used to say, "Reading is fundamental." It really is. And all I have to say is, kudos to the little bookstand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Seeing none, we'll go to clarification from commission. Is there any? I, I do have one. Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Chick, you can go. Uh, it was stated that, uh, you wouldn't have to post a sign to change your zoning. That statement's incorrect. If you look at our documents tonight, um, we'll further discuss this though as the time comes. And, uh, nobody is against the, the libraries that, that I've heard on the commission. Thank you. Ms. Chick?
You said it. Um, it's not about the zoning that we would be exempting.
Correct. Okay, um, go to correspondence. I, I don't think there is any. Ms. Bird, am I correct? Thank you. Um, public hearings.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendment. Official zoning map to include Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay district.
I support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Uh, before we start, um, the, um, hearing, I will, uh, describe the process. I will call, uh, to the public for any of those in support or opposition, uh, to the item. Um, you'll have three minutes, uh, to address your comments to the planning commission. And, um, again, state your name and address for the record. And we will go from there. Since we discussed all of these items at our last meeting, although there was none in May, it was April. Am I correct, Mr. Sloan?
Yeah.
May third, I'm sorry. Uh, we went, uh, through all these in detail at that time. If you can just give a brief synopsis of each item, uh, without going through the total report because that was also in the packet for May third and it's also in this packet for tonight's meeting, so I don't see a need to rehash the, the whole thing. Mr. Sloan?
Okay. Um, I'll go over briefly the proposed zoning map amendment for the Whitmore Lake and Horseshoe Lake overlay district. Uh, last year in 2016, there were some text amendments that were, uh, approved by the Township Board of Trustees upon recommendation by the planning commission. And those are included in the packet this evening. Essentially what they are, um, is, they are, uh, two overlay sub-districts, one on Whitmore Lake, one on Horseshoe Lake. And it relaxes some of the setback standards for side yard, lake front rear yard, and the street side front yard. And the text, uh, was approved and incorporated into the zoning ordinance. Uh, however, the map itself of the overlay areas was not. Um, there was a working map at that time, which are included in the packets this evening and, uh, noticed in accordance with the zoning ordinance in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And so at this point, we recommend, um, adopting the overlay maps, um, onto the zoning map so that these regulations would take effect to those areas that are shown on the map. And again, these are the same maps that had existed, um, since last year. They have not changed since, um, I think maybe the spring of 2016 when they were last revised. Um, so, these mapped areas, those would be the ones where those overlay areas would apply and those additional setback requirements or reduced setbacks, rather, would be applying to those lake area lots.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Uh, call to the public, uh, any of those in support or opposition that would like to speak? Seeing none, um, I move we close the public hearing for item A.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
I make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment, zoning article thirty-three, public notice subsection thirty-six dash one oh three four, area five, posting of signage.
I support. Um, all, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Again, Mr. Sloan, would you like to give a brief synopsis?
Uh, sure. This, this is an old proposal back in 2014. And, um, going back to, uh, some of the records at the February fifth, 2014 Planning Commission meeting, uh, there was a, there was an amendment to the zoning ordinance that was recommended for approval, um, that would have excluded, uh, proposed conditional use permits from the requirement to post a sign, uh, in the yard advertising the public hearing. And our understanding was that there had been no formal action on the amendment. And this was just part of a, a review and, uh, sort of cleanup process in terms of looking at anything that may have been recommended in years past that had not been acted upon by the township board and going one way or another with it, either sending it back to the township board or, uh, dropping it. And so this was one where, uh, we wanted to bring it up for a public hearing to, uh, to get comment, consider it, and figure out what to do, whether to, uh, go back to the township board with it or to, uh, to not do so and leave the current text as it is. Uh, currently, there's a requirement for someone applying for a conditional use permit to post a public notice sign in their front yard. Many municipalities have this requirement. The Zoning Enabling Act, uh, only requires that notices be mailed to neighbors within three hundred feet. However, some communities go above and beyond in terms of, uh, having their own local requirements. Some require signs, um, depending on the number of days before the hearing and other sorts of things that a local ordinance can have in terms of public notice, as long as it does not conflict with the zoning act, which this does not. Um, so, this comes back to the planning commission, um, I think the first time since 2014. And, um, after reviewing it, we can determine whether to either send it back to the board with a recommendation or, uh, to take no action and withdraw the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I'll call to the public for any of those opposed or in support that would wish to speak. You have three minutes.
Hello, David Gordon, fifty-five, fifty-eight, Helena Road. Um, maybe I misspoke at the beginning, but when I read this, it says, uh, a conditional use permit would be exempt from sign posting requirements. And that's what I would like to object to. Because, um, I believe even something like, um, there's a lot of possible conditional uses that are, uh, very impactful on the neighbors. Which is why I think we have a six hundred foot notification range out in the rural areas as opposed to three hundred in town. So if I made a mistake in my initial comments, that was, uh, this is what I'm trying to say, which is I think that conditional use permits should not be exempt from sign posting requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others? Seeing none, I move we close, uh, public hearing, uh, eight B. Is there support?
Yes, support.
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning ordinance amendment, zoning article four, schedule of district regulations subsection thirty-six dash nine eight D, accessory uses and buildings to a little free library bookstands as permitted accessory structures by adding the following subsection D ten.
I support. Uh, is there any questions on the motion? All, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Uh, again, I will make a call to the public for those opposed or, uh, in support. Seeing none, I'd like to close, uh, public hearing, item eight C. I have support by Ms. Chick. Is there any question on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
But before we continue, can I ask, uh, are we being televised? Cause the TV's not on. Okay, I just don't see the TV on there, sir. Is there a reason the TV's not on there where we could see it ourselves, sir?
Ms, Mr. Iquinto?
I'm just asking you a very proper question.
That, that's fine. I'd like to continue with the public hearings. Can I get a motion on item D, public hearings?
To open the public hearing for amendment, uh, to code of ordinance, chapter fourteen, land divisions and subdivision, article two, land division, section fourteen point two, two, application for land division approval to remove the application fees from the text.
Um, I apologize. Sorry. Uh, I support that motion. Is there any questions on that? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Sloan, would you like to speak, uh, on item D?
Uh, sure. Uh, just really briefly, uh, this is part of the land division ordinance that, uh, prescribes a specific fee for a land division application. And it's very rare for any ordinance to have the application fee in it. Usually the fees are set, uh, by the governing body, the city council, the township board. And it's often done as part of an annual budget process or whenever the fee schedule is amended from time to time. It's easier to amend a budget or a fee schedule than it is an ordinance. So, we recommend, um, the proposed amendment that would take the specific fee out of that and basically leave it to the township board, uh, whenever it adopts the budget and/or the fee schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Uh, anyone in the public wish to address, uh, either support or opposition to that? Seeing none, I make a motion, we close public hearing eight D.
Support.
Support by Mr. Iquinto. Any questions on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item nine, reports of committees. Uh, Board of Trustees, Ms. Chick?
The Board of Trustees actually met five times since our last planning commission meeting. Three were special meetings for the purpose of interviewing township manager candidates. We have two finalists and will vote on June thirteenth on a new manager. Uh, the Six Mile Road culvert proposal and resolution was approved. There's no definite date for repairs to begin, but Six Mile will be closed for approximately two weeks when they decide to do that. And then the two thousand seventeen road commission projects were approved. There will be township-wide brining and grading with some limestone where needed. The Fourth of July Committee was granted use of the North Village Community Park for parking. Uh, the township will also contribute half of the cost to the striping and asphalting of seventy-five Barker with the DDA paying the other half. And I believe we are still taking applications for the front desk position in the township offices. Tabitha has taken a full-time position elsewhere, so if anybody knows, anybody that's interested, have them contact the office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Um, CBA, uh, Ms. Stephens?
Thank you. We have not met since our last planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Uh, staff report, Ms. Bird, anything? Thank you. Planning consultant, Mr. Sloan?
Uh, nothing outside of what's on the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Iquinto?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the community garden is up and strong. We have, uh, forty boxes for community members. Uh, please reach out to the township office if you would like a box. And the dog park is, uh, um, doing well. And we are working with the school district on the River Walk to bring that to fruition. They do have a grant, as I've mentioned in the past, and we are going to be assisting them with labor force when they are ready to work on that this summer. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iquinto. Uh, like to move on to, uh, item ten, unfinished business, A. Uh, it's a zoning ordinance amendment. Official zoning map to include the Whitmore Lake, Horseshoe Lake overlay district. Um, Mr. Sloan, anything further on this at this time?
Nothing at this time unless there are any questions.
Thank you. Is, is there any questions or comments regarding this, uh, amendment for Mr. Sloan or statements? It has. Thank you. Um, seeing none, I would like to make a motion to, um, adopt it and forward it to the Board of Trustees. Support? Uh, supported by Mr. Iquinto. Are there any questions on the motion? Um, seeing none, uh, Mr. Zarzaki will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Effante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Um, we'll go to item ten B, which is the zoning ordinance amendment, article thirty-three regarding, uh, postage of signage. Mr. Sloan, would you like to add anything?
Uh, nothing, uh, beyond what was in the report. I think there's been, uh, some discussion. I've gotten some emails in terms of, uh, some follow-up questions and, um, some comments in terms of some actions that may have taken place after February twenty-fourteenth with that amendment. Um, I just didn't have anything, um, readily accessible when we were working on this to know what eventually happened with it without having, looking at all the subsequent, uh, meeting minutes. So, um, you know, the intent there was just to try to close a loop that seemed, uh, open back in twenty-fourteen. Um, I don't know what the official, uh, result of that amendment was, if anything did happen in twenty-fourteen, but based on what we had looked at, it didn't look like there was a formal motion to either, uh, deny it or to, uh, take the amendment away. So, we thought it was still hanging out there, which is why we wanted to bring it back up.
Thank you. Um, regarding comments on this item, I, I had written something, I prepared. I'm gonna kind of follow it. Bear with me if it sounds written because that's what it is. But, uh, there had been, um, maybe some emails, some conversation, um, and I think there's, there's been a slight misunderstanding, uh, by the public as to what the planning commission is undertaking, um, with this amendment, which is article thirty-three. And, uh, the specific section, subsection thirty-six, ten thirty-four, subsection five. Uh, it's been discussed, um, it's included in the packet, and the PC is not eliminating the postage, posting of signage requirement. There is an elimination of the term special land use, of which, uh, I looked up and, Mr. Sloan, maybe you can clarify or verify. There is no actual working term as a special land use in the ordinance. I think it's, uh, language that is old, maybe poor choice of language. It may seem to people that a special land use is a specific action, uh, which I don't believe it is. Am I correct, Mr. Sloan?
Uh, usually they're interchangeable. I think most communities call them the special land uses, but there are many that call them conditional uses.
Right.
Essentially they're synonymous.
And, and doing a search, uh, through our ordinance, the only place that it says special land use is in this section. So, I think it, it does need to be corrected, uh, to be consistent. There's not a specific definition for that term. Um, I think the intent of it may have been, uh, when somebody wants to do something with their, with a piece of land, call it special, I don't know. Um, but I think it would be, um, more consistent in eliminating that term, which is in your proposal. And, uh, making exempt the posted, the posting of signage for a conditional use, um, it was for three reasons. And I, and this is what, this is my interpretation, what I gathered in looking at the minutes from back in, uh, I believe March of twenty-fourteen, watching the video, uh, where Mr., uh, Luon, the, at that time, the, the planning consultant, the discussion at that joint meeting. There's three, three reasons that I believe, um, the signage, uh, should, for conditional use should be looked at. Um, it's a right of the property owner to proceed, uh, given they go through the conditional use permit process. That's number one. Um, there's no state law requiring the signage take place. And number three, the posting of the side, signage, if you watch the comments that Mr. Luon had at that time, became, uh, a burden to the process because an applicant would have to post the signage on their property for something that they have a right already to do, provided they go through the conditional use permit process. So while it's important to, uh, post public notice, um, and that was discussed back in twenty-fourteen, and I don't disagree with that, um, I, I believe the, the initial proposal at that time was to eliminate, uh, more of what, uh, than we have now. In some circumstances, as it's noted in the ordinance, it's equally important, uh, to not burden a property owner and a process to which they already have a right to. Um, this is why I'm in support of this change. Um, it's going to clean up this section of the ordinance. It's going to make the process for conditional use permit process easier, uh, because it does say if, if it's, if it's not posted, uh, the act, action, uh, of the planning commission could be delayed. So, i- if we're talking about trying to make things more user-friendly, this is not user-friendly. And again, I think there was a, uh, it made it sound as if the planning commission's eliminating the whole posting process and, and that's not the case. That's not, that's not the case. So if there's any other comments, uh, I would like to hear. Thank you. Ms. Chick?
Um, I did take, um, several comments from the public and their concern was specifically in this issue regarding, uh, the conditional use posting. Um, their concern, of course, is that they are, should know what's going on somebody's property if they're in the area, as it might impact, you know, the, the area and they want to be aware of it. They don't always get to come to the meetings, they don't always get to see the notices in the paper and that kind of thing. And so that was, they rely on those signs to inform them that there's something going on there. And if they're interested in them, they can actually, um, um, make an effort or, um, become part of the process and participate in making comment on it. Um, it had, uh, a, a issue of, um, visibility and transparency and being informed and I kind of want to defer to the public on this issue, uh, because I, I don't, other than the rest of the, uh, changes, I have no problem with it. I'm kind of siding with those folks that think that, uh, they want to be able to know what's going on by the posting of a sign. Uh, again, in some instances, uh, I, is it correct that they do get mailers to inform, uh, the neighbors that there's something going on there, correct?
Correct. As is stated in, uh, excuse me, as is stated, uh, if you look at the entire ordinance, um, you know, prior to, um, the section that we are intending to make a text amendment to. So. Thank you. Any, any other comments? Mr. Iquinto?
Um, I am in agreement with your interpretation and your statement, and I do support it as is.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zarzaki?
Um, I guess my concern is I don't understand, three years ago, the trustees allowed this to die and we don't really understand, at least I don't, why it was allowed to die. I mean, there was not a specific, I'm not being presented a specific reason that it was allowed to fade away at this point and it's now coming back again. I agree that, uh, some people may wish to have the sign present because, one, we don't have a really good publication paper in our area for publication that everybody can get access to read all the time.
We do, excuse me, but we do use the Ann Arbor News, so.
Yes. But not everybody gets it.
Understood.
I don't get the Ann Arbor News. I did for a while. I don't get the Ann Arbor News. I did for a while. But again, there's not a reliable, consistent means of getting the application to everybody. This is not a major sign for, we're gonna have hundreds of them around there all the time, but it's possible that we may want to table this and get some more direction from the current board as to their viewpoint on this before we send something to them that, you know, was allowed to die three years ago. Is it gonna, are we gonna send them something again that's gonna die again? We don't know what happened. I don't know what happened, you know, three years ago. So, I'm, I'm not willing to, at this point, support it. I agree the language needs to be cleaned up, but I think the concept of the sign is something that we may still want to, you know, maintain for a while.
Thank you. Ms. Stephens? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify. It never made it to the board. It never made it from the planning commission to the board. So, that's, it just didn't get there. There was other amendments that the same thing happened.
It fell through the cracks.
It did.
And this is not the only one. Actually, there's, there were several at the same time. So, whatever the process, I don't remember. I'm not on the Board of Trustees for whatever reason. It's a housekeeping measure. We've been addressing it. So, Ms. Stephens?
So, a variance is not a by right decision. And yet, a variance does not require a postage of signage, which I believe that it should. I believe a variance should also have a posting on the site. So I'm a little uncomfortable with the connection between a conditional use permit being a by right use on the property if you go through the conditional use process, yet it's, we're removing that signage requirement, but a variance is not a by right. You, you, the board must, it's a, must find that your property meets certain standards, and yet a variance doesn't require postage of signage either. Personally, I think a variance should have signage, and I think a conditional use permit application should have signage. In Indianapolis, what we did, the city had very sturdy metal frames with the, the sign in there that just said, you know, there's, the site is the subject of a, a various application, that type of thing. And then it gave the telephone number to the planning office, and then whoever the property owner was, they checked that sign out. They didn't have to create a sign. They didn't have to think about it. They just took that sign with them, posted it on the site, and then when the process was over, brought the site, the sign back. So I don't think it has to be a particularly onerous process for the homeowner, or the property owner, rather, to do. But I personally would like to see the signage requirement remain in the ordinance.
Ms. Infante?
I, I agree. When I originally read and then did the research, the, looking at the video, my understanding was just to clear up redundancy in the ordinances, and so that was the intent of moving this language. So I looked at the conditional use process, assuming that there was going to be a requirement for signage, and there wasn't. And I thought maybe mailers or, and I think it's really important to have some sort of signage indicating a conditional use change to a property within, I mean, in the rural areas, I think 600 feet is, is respecting neighbors. I think what Ms. Stephens just suggested might be a great process or protocol to look into, but I really do feel it's important to keep the, the language or put, definitely to keep the postage of signage for a conditional use permit. I really do.
Thank you, Ms. Infante. So, we have a, how do you propose that we address this, Mr. Sloan? We could have a vote, a, a roll call vote. Obviously, it sounds like the pleasure of the commission is that the language stay, which is not how we have this proposed.
Well, there are a few different ways that we can go, and there's a few items that have come up around the table here. First is that there, there should be something done with removing the reference to special land use and putting conditional use permit there somewhere, whether we're going to require it or exempt it. Conditional use language should be there just for consistency purposes. Another item is currently variance applications are exempt. Some communities do require it for variance applications and not for others, and again, that's a local requirement. But that's something that the, the planning commission can discuss whether or not to include that for variance requirements. And then finally, there is one item that I want to address here in subsections G and H. These two subsections have an incorrect reference to the previous section from which they came. And those section references should be updated to 36-1034, subsection 5. So, those are just minor housekeeping changes in terms of the, in terms of the section itself. And then finally, one thing to, to look at is in subsection H, the failure to comply with it. Right now, it, it states that if there is a failure to comply with the signage requirements, that the public hearing shall be adjourned and rescheduled. So, if someone didn't make the deadline for whatever reason, that public hearing would be required to be rescheduled until they do comply with the sign requirements. That, again, is up to the local community. Some communities that have a sign requirement, it won't nullify a public hearing if the sign is not posted. But a lot of times, it's just what the intent was. If the intent of the applicant was, they forgot or they missed it by a couple of days. Sometimes it's allowed, but if they purposefully didn't want to put the sign up, sometimes that calls for an adjournment and rescheduling. So, maybe looking at that and judging that on a case-by-case basis can be looked at as well. So there's a few other topics beyond just what was done in 2014 that have come up that we may want to discuss.
Okay, so what, what I propose here is that I am going to make a motion. We went through the public hearing. We have this as unfinished business. I am going to make the motion to approve the memo by Mr. Sloan regarding this item with the correction of G and H sections which are incorrect. Do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Iaquinto. Any discussion on this motion? Basically, I want to explain what I'm doing. I'm, I'm going through the process. We've had this set. By the comments, I understand the wishes of the commission. I'm going through this procedure so that it can technically be voted on, corrections made, and possible resubmital. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Sloan? Is that understood? That's what I'm going to do.
That it would, it would go basically to the board with the intent of what it was in 2014.
You would, if, if this motion does not pass, which I think it shall not, you will, we will still have to make correction on your, on the, on the items that we have here because it was put out for a public hearing as this. It would have to be corrected. We basically have to have another public hearing.
Depending on the substance of what's changed, there may not be another public hearing required. For example, if, if the motion were not to be approved, and there was another motion to just replace special land use with conditional use permit to be consistent and to revise subsections G and H to be consistent with the ordinance, that doesn't substantively change the origin of what was proposed.
Okay.
It's a pretty non-controversial change. Now, if we include something else, like for example, to say, require variance signs to be included as part of this, in that case, I'd recommend having another public hearing because that's a substantial change that, you know, there might, there may or may not be additional public comment on.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
So, couldn't we just amend the proposed changes and remove the conditional use permit as being exempt? Doesn't that leave this entirety as a whole, except for we're gonna take conditional use permits exempt from signposting? Can you still get your corrections on G and H?
We can, we can still do the corrections on G and H, I think, while we're doing this, should be, should be part of, part of it. It's just a matter of how we want the introductory paragraph of five to read.
I have a solution. There's a motion on the floor. I made a motion as this, as is. If it gets denied, another commissioner can make a, a motion for approval of this document with the said corrections, and we can forward it on at that point. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yep.
Okay. So right now, we have a motion by myself, supported by Mr. Iaquinto, to approve this as is presented to us and, and forward it to the Board of Trustees. Mr. Zarzaki, can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
No.
Mr. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
No.
Ms. Stephens?
No.
Zarzaki, no.
Thank you. The motion fails. So would another commissioner like to make another motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the suggested changes to amend Article XX111, 23, 33, public notice up section 36-103, section 5, postage of signage, but to remove conditional use as exempt from signposting requirements.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions on this motion? Everybody clear on the intent of Ms. Chick's motion?
Is it removing conditional use permit or special land use?
It's the same thing. We were replacing special land use with conditional use.
With conditional use permit.
In other words, moving it back to the required area, the sentence that would be required signage. But yet, the, the other, you may want to add to the motion regarding G and H.
Changes G and H, yep.
Okay, with the, with the corrections of the sections to G and H?
Yes.
Is that motion clear to everybody? No other questions? Mr. Zarzaki, can you have a roll call vote?
Mr. Roman?
No.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Iaquinto?
No.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. So. Mr. Zarzaki? Okay. We will move on to C, 10C, which is the Schedule of District Regulation, subsection 36-98. The little, Ed Little Free Libraries Bookstand as permitted accessory structure. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. This proposal came about because several months ago, there was an applicant who wanted to put in a little free library bookstand, and it was not among the exempt structures in the zoning ordinance in terms of things that somebody could put up in their yard without a permit or anything of that nature. And structures are not permitted in the front yard in the area where it was proposed, except for in some cases like a fence. But anything like a shed or any type of building or structure, they were not allowed in the front yard. So, that was not a permit that could be approved. But rather than just deny the permit and move on, this is something that we brought to the planning commission's attention in terms of something that we may want to look at in terms of having little free libraries either exempt or permitted with some regulations in areas of the township. And we looked at their website, at the Little Free Library website that they have, just to get an understanding of what they are. And the website actually has a story of, in one case, where a community had adopted regulations into its ordinance, and it had a list of some of the aspects of little free libraries that they had regulated just to add a level of comfort and to be explicit that they are permitted. And so, going off of that, of that example, what we propose is something where it, it is almost a page, and it looks like a lot, but in summary, it's this. First, that they can be placed anywhere on a lot, as long as they're not overhanging a public right-of-way or any other easement. And it'll still have to meet the clear vision requirements of the ordinance. So if it's too close to a driveway or a road intersection, it has to be backed off a little bit. Next, it limits it to one per lot. The next is that it can't create any obstructions, and it shall not obstruct barrier-free access. The design requirements are that it's similar materials and colors as the principal structure, if applicable. In some cases, it may not be applicable, but in some cases where you may be in a subdivision or a site condo, there may be some rules that apply there to the design. The next section is the enclosure requirements and the maximum dimensions. What's proposed here is a maximum height, or a maximum area of 24 inches wide, 24 inches high, and 16 inches deep in terms of the box structure itself. The maximum height is, is five feet. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to create some kind of a three-dimensional shape so that if somebody wants to do a little free library, a reasonable one, that's, that would be perfectly okay. It's just trying to prevent some of the things that we may not want if, if it's not a little free library per se, that instead of books, it's something else. So, we want to try to narrow it down so that if, so that the regulation can't be abused. It's not that we don't want people to have little free libraries. It's that, you know, oftentimes, we have zoning regulations with the best intentions, and, you know, someone who's savvy enough or just wants to do something different will abuse those regulations, and that's not what we want. Because sometimes when regulations are abused, the first reaction is repeal the regulations so that we don't have them anymore and just do away with it. So, we want to try to prevent that in the future so that these regulations can be sustained. Under the identification signage, we simply state that there can be non-commercial signage anywhere on the structure enclosures. So whatever they want to put of a non-commercial nature, as long as they're not having commercial advertising. And then finally, there's a requirement for a land use permit. Now, whether, what form that takes or whether there's a fee, that's up to the township. But essentially, if someone applies for one with the township, the township would simply look at the proposal to make sure it meets the requirements. If it meets the requirements, it's approved. The only way to know that for sure is to go through the permit process. So that's a summary of the proposed regulations, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Mr. Iaquinto, question?
Thank you. I am in favor of all of it except H. Applications and plans for little free library stands must be reviewed for land use approval by township prior to construction. We're already setting the parameters, the size, the, the height, dimensions. So if somebody meets that, why should they have to go through an, again, another approval process? Because I'll share this with folks. Our approval processes here are very difficult for any developer, any business that comes in. And I mirror Mary's comments that why are we gonna make this a ridiculous, difficult process as the rest of our processes here? So I am not in favor of H in any way, shape, or form.
Ms. Chick?
I also agree with Mr. Iaquinto's comments. I also am not particularly fond of number D. I don't think it's necessarily the materials and colors have to match the principal structure.
But I, again, it says if applicable, so I, it was a little.
Then, okay, then it's very vague, if, if applicable. Who decides? So just take it out.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Zarzaki?
I agree with Mr. Aquino. Going through a permit process for something like this is extreme. It's something that, you know, takes two to three weeks in many cases. And we're not asking to put up a barn, to put up a shed. I think everybody knows what these look like. They're pretty standard. We were giving dimensions. We're giving everything to it. I would think something better just, you know, submit a picture when it's done and, you know, or something, but we don't need a permit process for this. That's the one thing I disagree with as well.
Ms. Afonte?
I think something that drives projects like this is enthusiasm, and I'm very concerned that the permit process would absolutely kill it. So, I'm very against H.
Ms. Stephens?
I agree. D and H should be struck from the amendment.
My comment is, as the person that actually enforced ordinances, when you're, when you're the person that has to go out there and deal with a complaint of some type, be it good or bad, all of these details here are very helpful to you, such as the design one. Do most people care what it looks like? Probably not. But the other issue that I see with not, you're calling it a permit process. Are we considering a fee on this, Mr. Sloan, or just, what would be the definition of applications and plans in H? A land use permit, is there going to be a fee?
That would be up to the township. In some cases, communities will require a permit, but may set different fees or exempt from, from the fee schedule, certain things. So, that would be a board requirement.
Okay. And I can understand that, and the board can make that decision. I have a real, a realistic question, though, is that if we don't permit these or have some type of application process so that the township knows there's one of these at 123 Easy Street, for example, we have an enforcement issue where the code enforcement officer has to go out there and deal with something. We have no basis. We have no timeframe. We have no information on record. That's another question that leads me to, how long can these types of things? Is there, is there a timeframe? The thing could be put up, stand for years, get dilapidated, and become a problem. That's the realistic view of this. So, where in here do we have removal of one that's not used? A dilapidated one? It does become a problem. I mean, it's a realistic question.
It is. And in the absence of anything in this text, that would probably be covered in the blight ordinance or a property maintenance code if something is, something becomes blight because of disrepair.
But not according to this. This says they can have it, meet these requirements, and it can be there forever. And there's no, there's nothing about its condition or otherwise.
That's correct. Without any language here, we would have to use a different ordinance. Same as if someone had a shed and the ordinance allowed them to have a shed, and there were no provisions for the maintenance or the repair of the shed, and it becomes dilapidated. They would use a different ordinance to say now it's obsolete, or it's blight, or something like that.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to like the taking of a fee. If that's bypassed, that's, it really doesn't, I could go either way with that, but some, some form of record, not so much plans. If they meet these, this criteria, I think it's all good. Not that they would have to submit a formal plan of some type, but Mr. Aquino?
So, again, as far as an enforcement issue, if somebody complains, so the enforcement officer, code enforcement officer just goes out there, if it meets these requirements, that it doesn't, it does not, it's not obtrusive into the right-of-way, it meets, it's not higher than five feet, it meets within the constraints of the length, height, and width, then the code enforcement officer looks at it, makes that decision, says, boom, it meets the ordinance. So, I mean, it is easy to uphold in that fashion. If it doesn't meet the ordinance, then he gives a notice to that property owner, okay, you didn't meet the ordinance. Here's a copy of it. Meet it, or you have to remove it. You have to remove it. And again, and there's all those procedures already in place for all that. So, as far as an enforcement, it's easy to do, in my opinion, as long as it's spelled out, which it is spelled out. So, I don't, I am not still in favor of H or, and again, a D.
Ms. Chick?
Couldn't we just reference the blight ordinance and add that as H or D, or whatever letter it would be?
We, I hate to add on things when it's gone through public hearing. Is there a motion by commissioner regarding this? Mr. Aquino?
I make a motion regarding the application for, or for the, the structure with slashing items D and H as presented.
Is there support?
Of course.
Support by Ms. Chick. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, can we do a roll call vote?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Aquino?
Yes.
Ms. Afonte?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We'll move on to Item 10D, the amendment of land division sections regarding the application fees from the text. Mr. Sloan?
Just to follow up from the comments of the public hearing, what this would simply do is this would remove the specific fee from the ordinance itself. It still states that there's an application fee there, so somebody reading the ordinance would know that there's a fee with their application. It just wouldn't tell them how much. They would just go to the fee schedule to get that information. Otherwise, this proposal is the same. The other unique difference is that this is from the land division ordinance, not from the zoning ordinance. So, the procedure for amending a general ordinance is a little different than a zoning ordinance, but since we're working on ordinances and the Planning Commission does get involved with land division matters from time to time, this is a good place to start with this amendment proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I make the motion that the Planning Commission approve the zoning ordinance amendment presented in Item 10D.
Support.
Support by Mr. Aquino. Any questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Zarzaki, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Aquino?
Yes.
Ms. Afonte?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item 10E. We have further discussion on proposed zoning ordinance amendment of the open and unroofed terraces, patios, and porches. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. At last month's Planning Commission meeting on May 3rd, we discussed some of the proposed changes to types of structures that are exempt from the requirements for placement, area, or height in the zoning ordinance. Currently, as the text reads, open or unroofed terraces, patios, and porches are exempt from any types of those regulations. However, at the same time, the zoning ordinance requires structures attached to the home to also meet the minimum setbacks of the home. So, terraces, patios, and porches that are detached from a home can have massing and size that is subject to setback requirements. However, if it's detached, somebody could make the argument that it would fall under this paragraph here in subsection 36-98G1. If they state that it's detached and it's not attached to the home, it's not covered by anything else, they could make the argument that it's exempt even though it could be as high as the home. It could be a second-story porch, or it could be something that's freestanding as an accessory structure. So, after discussing these issues at the May 3rd Planning Commission meeting, we recommend removing some of these items there just so that they would be subject to the area and the setback and the height requirements of the zoning ordinance. In most cases, these types of structures would meet the standards just because usually they're built far enough away. But if they are located in setbacks and they do have massing, they could be impactful to the neighbors, which is why many of these, if not all, should be meeting the setback standard. So, what we recommend doing is removing the text that reads, "Open and unroofed terraces, patios, porches, and awnings." Steps would still be exempt because sometimes there are egress issues that require the placement of steps. So, those would be included or maintained as exempt. And then, later on in the paragraph, to insert the words "at grade" before sidewalks and private driveways, just so that if anything is elevated for whatever reason, that would not be exempt. But if it's an at-grade sidewalk or driveway, it would be exempt. So, those proposed amendments would clarify what we think the intent of the ordinance is in terms of exempting certain things but requiring others to meet setback requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. At this time, I would like to make motion to set this for a public hearing at a following meeting. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Aquino. Any questions, comments regarding this proposal on the zoning ordinance amendment? I think it, my opinion is it makes more sense this way. This was one of the items that was from the 2014 bunch of zoning amendments. And at that time, I knew it could pose a problem, and it probably has. But I'm pretty comfortable with the, the language way Mr. Sloan proposed it. Is there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to set this for public hearing. We have to do a roll call vote, I believe. Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Aquino?
Yes.
Ms. Afonte?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I don't know if next meeting would be okay. It can be whenever the convenience of Mr. Sloan or Ms. Bird. Thank you. Because there is a public, there's a notice, right? So, it would have to be July? Yes. Thank you. We move on to Item 10F. This is the review of the sign regulations of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. We have a letter here dated June 1st that reviews some of the existing regulations in the sign ordinance portion of the zoning ordinance. And this is a follow-up to a discussion at a previous meeting where we introduced the idea that the sign regulation should be updated to meet some of the content neutral requirements based on a Supreme Court decision of about two years ago. Since that decision, communities have been slowly but surely updating their ordinances to be more content neutral, to meet the standards of that decision. In doing so, that process often reveals some of the weaknesses in a sign ordinance in terms of maintenance or proliferation of temporary signs, or being too permissive with billboards. And so, in doing this, oftentimes, sign ordinances, they have more problems than just content neutrality and the subject matter or the content of particular signs, but that they might be allowing too many, or they're putting too many restrictions on some or too few on others. And so, what we did was we looked at the sign ordinance because we have to look at it for content neutrality anyway in accordance with new federal law, but also looking at it for the workability and some of the best practices that sign ordinances should have. So, what I'm going to do is just give a brief synopsis of the Supreme Court case and go through the sign ordinance based on some of the major themes to address what we think should be updated. In this Supreme Court case, it was decided based on a church that had sued a town in Arizona because it had denied some of its temporary use signs. And the temporary use signs had to be, they could only be out 12 hours before, and they had to be removed an hour after an event. And it was a non-commercial speech on the sign, and the community regulated those signs different than political signs or opinion signs. They were all non-commercial types of signs, but the community regulated them differently. And the Supreme Court said that that was an infringement on the First Amendment free speech because you're regulating certain forms of non-commercial speech different than others. Some of the justices came up with a list of things that communities could still regulate with respect to signs. And these are generally all content-neutral things, which include size, placement, lighting, static changes versus changeable message signs, on-premise and off-premise types of signs. So, they left open quite a few things communities could still regulate. In looking at the sign ordinance, a few of the things that we had noticed was that the purpose statements could be more robust. One of the items in the purpose statement could be including text stating that it's the right to free speech under the First Amendment of the Constitution, and acknowledging that it is an ordinance that does regulate speech to some degree and that in compliance with the First Amendment, we want to regulate any kind of content as little as possible. Sign regulations, unlike any other in the zoning ordinance, are the most complicated because you are regulating people's right to speak. And in doing so, we have to be very careful about what we can regulate and what we can't. In the definitions, we often recommend that a sign ordinance include any sign-related definitions in the sign article itself. Otherwise, if someone's looking in the sign ordinance, they want to see the definitions. They're flipping back and forth through different chapters of the ordinance. So, as much as it's helpful to have all the definitions in one area of the zoning ordinance, when we have sign-related definitions, we recommend having those in the sign chapter. The general sign regulations are mostly content-neutral. There are some items where it could be clarified, and the township may want to consider adding some provisions for illumination, maintenance of signs, and other similar standards. Like we spoke about the little free library example a few minutes ago. Oftentimes, if a sign becomes in disrepair, it's subject to the blight ordinance. But it doesn't hurt to have something in the sign regulations that require signs in good repair and to go into detail in terms of what that means, not rusting, not fading, that it's, it's up straight, it's maintained, and other types of elements where a lot of times, the sign is pretty harmless. But when it becomes in disrepair and becomes a blight, that's something where the maintenance should be enforced. The next section on signs permitted in all districts. Those regulations do have some content-based standards on what's permitted, what's not. Some of the content-neutral ones can be reused, but there are some content-based ones that need to be fixed. There are sign regulations that are different by zoning district. That is a content-neutral way of regulating signs. If you do it by zoning district, you're not regulating it based on the content of the message or the speaker or an event. It's just by district. So, that's something that we would recommend bolstering and being more explicit in terms of the district regulations, what's permitted, and then having good purpose statements for those districts so that we explain why, for example, we allow some signs in a commercial district that we don't allow in a residential district. Some of those are pretty obvious, but when it comes to sign ordinances being litigated, it never hurts to go sometimes over the top with the purpose statements to justify those distinctions. Under billboards, we don't have any content issues with the zoning ordinance language for billboards. You currently have signs for automobile service stations. Most ordinances have signs for auto service and repair stations. The problem is that they're speaker-based, where you apply one set of rules to a certain speaker, in this case, a land use, and then you may have someone next door who's, has a retail store, but not an auto service center, that we treat different. They could be on the same road, the same zoning district, some of the same types of uses. But if one of them is one particular use, you're giving them a little bit more of an advantage. So, we recommend... So, we recommend having no distinctions based on the land use itself. Still have distinctions based on the district, but when we get into land use, those are speaker-based regulations that could be challenged. With the electronic message signs, we don't have any issues with the zoning ordinance with respect to the content. With the exempt signs, almost every ordinance has a subsection of signs that are exempt. Most of the time, it's something like public safety signs, address signs, traffic control signs, signs in the right-of-way, things of that nature. What we want to strive for is to minimize the exemptions. Some of the changes would be getting rid of any content-based provisions. That includes temporary signs for specific organizations or events, temporary real estate signs, political campaign signs, national, state, municipal, university flags. They could be separated into temporary commercial and temporary non-commercial signs, but to be very specific based on the content, that's something we want to eliminate. If there are any content-based distinctions, we want to make sure that any distinctions are in the interest of public safety. So, for example, we'll say that an address sign is exempt. Well, that's content-based. We're saying if your sign has your address, it's exempt. What we should include there is a public safety purpose. For example, for the identification of the site and emergency vehicle response, places have to have an address sign, the address sign must be visible. That can be justified as being a content-based regulation that would most likely be upheld. I'm not an attorney, I don't know if it will be, but any kind of distinction that we have with content, we want to make sure that there's a public safety type of purpose. Under prohibited signs, we don't have any major content issues there. Under the illumination standards, the illumination standards refer to the use of lights or decorations related to religious or patriotic festivities. Some of those are event-based, and something that you may want to consider is only allowing those types of lights for a certain number of days in a calendar year. So, if you were to say up to 90 days in a calendar year, you can have this lights, these lights, it doesn't say it has to be any specific event or a holiday or any kind of a festival, it's just someone's right to put up lights so many days a year regardless of the time of year or the event which it surrounds. Under the computation of the surface area, this is always a tricky one in terms of how we measure sign surface because you could take a graphic that is, say, an oval, and some sign ordinances say it has to be a four-sided rectangular shape, so you'll have the oval enclosed in a rectangle, and the area of your rectangle is your sign area. There's no wrong way to do it. Every ordinance does a little bit different, but what we recommend doing is having some graphics in there showing how certain shapes are measured, just so that when it does come up, we can look at a picture and say, this is how we measure that shape. Couple more here, and then I'll wrap it up. Under removal, the sign regulation currently states that the sign shall be removed by the owner or lesses of the premise when the business which it advertises no longer conducts business on the premise. That could be considered content-based because it's an off, it's no longer an on-premise business, but we could change the language to state that a sign can't be a primary use of the property, or that it has, or it can't be located on a parcel without a building or something similar. So, we recommend strengthening that language a little bit more, that would give the township a little bit more authority to remove a sign that has truly been abandoned. And then finally, there's the responsibilities for the signs in the registry. There are generally no major content issues with the zoning ordinance language besides a reference to an advertiser of a sign. That portion of the ordinance could be changed without the general structure, but it does call for a registry there, so we would try to make that as content-neutral as possible. So, from a general standpoint, that raises a lot of the issues that we see in the sign ordinance. Some are content-based, some are not, that are generally best practices. And what we would recommend is to try to update those based on some of the recommendations. At some point, we would highly recommend having the township attorney be involved with reviewing any recommended changes, just to see if the township attorney's understanding of the case matches with what's proposed by the township. In dealing with many municipal attorneys, I've had a lot of differing opinions in terms of what kind of content neutrality is required, which is not unusual because the way that this case is worded, it wasn't exactly clear in terms of what communities can do beyond some of the non-commercial types of speech. There are court precedents that allow communities to regulate on-premise versus off-premise and to make distinctions of commercial versus non-commercial. So, we're not sure how far to go with some of those. A lot of times, it's a community-by-community basis, so we would recommend having the township attorney look at any recommendation that the planning commission proposes. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. I'd like to make a motion and possibly discuss any questions on the motion during the motion time with Mr. Sloan, but I make motion for Mr. Sloan to provide the commission with updated sign regulation ordinance at a future meeting. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Chick. Questions on the motion from Mr. Sloan? None? Yeah, we've gone through this pretty thoroughly, I think. So, we have to have a roll call vote, Mr. Zarzaki?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Iquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Mr. Zarzaki, yes.
Thank you, motion passes. So, we'll look forward to that update. Mr. Sloan, at your convenience. Ms. Chick?
I just have a real quick question for Mr. Sloan. Under general sign regulations, it said adding general provisions for sign illuminations. We do have a whole section on illumination. Are you referring to per zoning district?
Let me flip to that and find that section.
And, well, it's under billboards.
Okay, the illumination standards under billboards, these are very thorough, very specific, and I think they come from the Michigan Highway Advertising Act that actually prescribes illumination standards for billboards. So, the ones that are there, those are very consistent. What I would want to take a look at is in 36-800, there are general illumination standards in terms of any kind of sign. In 36-800A, it's basically that it doesn't adversely affect the vision of operators of vehicles or anyone in the right-of-way or parking area. It also states not to shine or reflect into residential districts. So, a sign would probably have to meet the general illumination standards of the zoning ordinance, but we may want to look at having maximum illumination from a sign, whether it's something measured in nits or foot candles, something to have those for non-billboard signs. Another item is under B, it states that there shall not be any flashing or fluttering types of lights. And it exempts the movement showing the date, the time, and the temperature. That's a content-based distinction where if I have the date, the time, or temperature on the sign, I can have it, but if I want to advertise, say, the price of gasoline or some other type of message, I can't do it. Somebody could probably challenge that and have a pretty good case. And by their nature, a lot of times, we still see time and temperature signs even though they're obsolete. We have it on our dashboard, our phone. These days, the only reason to put up a time or temperature sign is because an ordinance allows you to, and you'd want something to flash at people just to grab their attention. That's something that we would look at to take out the time or temperature one, but maybe look at some other type of illumination or changeable message based on a certain frequency. I think the State Highway Advertising Act allows illuminated billboards to have a message change of once every eight seconds, I think. So, we may want to look at something as a general standard for all signs, or we may want to go with something, you know, much less.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 11, we have no new business. Item 12, approval of preceding minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 3 planning commission with dispersment of reading.
Support by Ms. Chick. Any questions, comments on the motion? Anyone see any correction? I did not. Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We'll go to the final call to the public. Again, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. If you'd like to address the planning commission.
David Gordon again, 5558, Herner. Thank you for standing up for alerting people about changes taking place in their community. If it was part of the conditional use permit process, it would have made sense to eliminate it from this other section of the ordinance, and I liked what Ms. Stephens says about using it for variances too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments to the commission? Seeing none. Comments from the commissioners, we'll start with Ms. Infante.
Nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Stephens.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki?
Just a reminder that Saturday is cleanup day, so disposal of household hazardous materials, tires, electronics, wastes, scrap metals, and such.
Thank you. Ms. Chick?
I would like to acknowledge the efforts of Mr. Andrew Locatos and GoFundMe for the completing the non-motorized path that were two easements that we could not obtain through the township, and Mr. Locatos offered to try to raise funds, and he has done so. And what funds he could not raise to meet the demands of those two property owners, he was going to supply for himself, and so we will have a completed non-motorized path with no gap. So, thank you very much to those that contributed and Mr. Locatos's effort.
Thank you, Mr. Iquinto?
Yes. Being a big advocate of all of the township board meetings being televised, when I asked earlier, it's because the TV was not on showing that it was, we were being televised. And so, I always want our meetings to be televised to the general public so that they can watch it and/or they're being recorded and people can watch them at any time. What I didn't appreciate was Mr. Nelson's rudeness when I asked a simple question, and I think that was uncalled for, and I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions or comments. Thank you. I would like to announce the next regular meeting is June 21, 2017. Do I hear a motion for adjournment? I'll support that. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, thank you very much. I was asking opposed.